Stand and pledge basic flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Day September 4th, 2012, at time of 7:00 PM, in regard to meeting the Greensburg Council is called to order. This time requesting also phones, pictures, any other like fine classes, please. Call vote please. Our vote call.
Daryl.
Here.
Here.
Lynn.
Lynn.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember has received the minutes presented. Do you see any changes, amendments, or additions to them? If not, I've entertained the motion to approve them as received. Someone?
Say.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O same side. Thank you. Control business, Jeff Smith, many 2010 day 16 service orders, second reading.
Last month we approved the first stream of many 2010 day 16 forces to clarification of interference in our future standing. I'd like to pass one second.
Any questions? Contain motion to.
I would move to pass a second reading ordinance 2012 day 12.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O same side. Second reading passed, contain motion to suspend the rules. Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O same side. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O same side.
What's that? Please put twice the same thing.
Okay. The vote on the sustain the rules. Now third reading, contain motion for third reading. Third reading, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O same side. Thank you. Mark Clasch to camera, trash ordinance discussion, job descriptions. Do you have any more job descriptions?
Yeah, that's on there too. Uh, I think you all should receive a draft in your packet. Input that we gathered from the ones that did respond along with changes proposed by different staff members from the department have all been incorporated into drafts you have in front of you. I guess I'm just looking for direction from the council and what you think.
Hi.
Yes.
I think it's a real good beginning. I think there's a couple of things in here after reading more carefully that we probably need to make sure of. Begin with ashes there. I'm, the word says residue from grills and it says trash burners out. You don't want to commit that. Do you read in the city? Bring trash?
No.
So, you know, that's old language from years ago. We need to strike that, I believe. And then I don't know what other fires means. I think we need to either modify that to clarify what it is we're talking about or say something like, you know, we're talking about grilling or.
Fireplace.
Well, fire got heated buildings. I guess that's fireplace.
I thought that was probably like the people that actually have had on wood stoves or wood stove type heating. I don't know. In other words, I'm sure there's some other permissible uses. I don't know what they all would be.
No, so I'm just, I don't know.
So in other words, that's why it says other fires.
Yeah.
And I don't think you're going to be able to come up with a description of every other possible fire.
No, I'm trying to modify it just to be like minor or maybe similar if we got, you know, for cooking, eating buildings, residue from grills or other similar like fire, like fires would be where I was going with it in order to kind of keep it to a, something that's permissible and yet, you know, we're not, we're probably not going to, if there's a huge fire, something burning down.
Well, since we're not going to know what they all are and we don't want to define them all in this ordinance, how about just putting other and insert the word permissible?
Perhaps question. What are we talking about?
Talking about fire.
That's what I just picked up.
What can you do and what can't you do?
Cook. Cook, otherwise you can apply to the fire chief for a permit to burn within the city limits. And I can go out, I evaluate what they've got. Is it going to impact neighborhoods? And at that point I can give them a permit to burn within the city limits.
And that could be almost any type of fire.
Could be.
So that'll become permissible fire.
Yeah, it does.
It could be any other kind of fire, so we don't know for sure what that would be.
Permissible fire.
I don't know how I'm going to look at the ashes and distinguish whether it's permissible or not permissible.
Okay, I don't know if you are either, but at least it clarifies to put some definition behind it.
But you'll be able to see it anyway being trash bags, right?
Should be.
All kinds of metal buckets.
I think in furniture, I think that's classified, but maybe we need to also besides bed, maybe also say mattresses or that kind of thing. That's an awful common thing that's out there and maybe by even identifying it specifically might help to deter, yeah, just adding one more word in. And then under normal household items such as other small containers, to me, small containers are probably recyclable for the most part. And I understand what we're saying there, but I'm also wondering whether we want to have addition, a definition of what recyclable materials are and find some way in this ordinance or to.
The problem is we don't determine what is recyclable and what's not. That's determined by the Decatur Solid Waste District. And that changes at times based on the market. In other words, at one time, I think you could recycle plastics one through nine. Right now you can recycle one through seven. Because there was no market for eight, nine. Now I have no idea what three, four, five, any of them.
Right.
But I know it changes often though.
I understand that. But, and so leaving it there, but is fine. But what made me think then was I, maybe the other council members have had a thought and I've, well, they're thought on that, but I think we ought to find some way to talk about recycling in this, in this ordinance. That's my thought on it. I would truly encourage it, that's for sure, because when I start recycling, I cut my trash in half.
That'd be a great savings to the city too, cutting back on trash. But can we, I don't know how we would fight in an ordinance like this though. Like state of New York, they enforce it. Do they enforce it?
They do. And I don't think they go door to door like recycling police, but if you're found to be in violation, it's state law play with recycling, then you are fined.
I'm not trying to fine anybody per se. I'm just trying to find, we can identify what recycling is and somehow we let people know that we expect that, because if we're talking about limiting the trash bags, which again I think is reasonable thing to do, that ought to be in harmony with that. I mean, that's part of what we're saying. And, and we do have a very convenient way for people to recycle. The most convenient, I mean, as, as convenient as, as the trash pickup. I think we ought to find a way to keep that in people's minds and keep people utilizing it. Daryl says it's going to save everybody down the way.
The concern is, I mean, this is, this ordinance doesn't really address that. We all agree, I think, and we all want to encourage it, but I don't know if this is the, the place to put that. I'm, I'm not sure. I don't know how you'd incorporate it. I mean, that's what I'm getting at here.
Well, I don't, I don't know that I have an answer to that either. I guess I was bringing up that we can think about it and maybe come up with some, or have our attorney come up with a thought, or maybe we can research some other places that do recycling and have trash picked up and find out what their ordinances might say or other things. I can, I, I dealt with this with Columbus. There were, there are a lot of different ways to skin this cat. You have, you have both the good and bad. You have good recycling, so that's, that's a positive. There are other communities, Columbus doesn't have curbside recycling. So one of the things that they really gave consideration to is adopting Lubin's model where you use the stickers for the trash. But that's not necessar, I don't think that everyone thought that was the route they wanted to go. Obviously, then what they ended up doing was going with toders and using different sizes. And they sort of used different pricing scales to incentivize the neighbors to try to recycle more, to reduce the size of the toter that they would need and thereby the cost to each family. But that invites a whole different discussion as to whether you want to, you know, those categories, expenditures, et cetera. So I, I, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of great ideas out there, but I, but the council will probably have to revisit what, what's going on with recycling now and how they can tie that into incentivizing people to, to do more recycling. And, and the only thing that I've heard of is, is sort of doing it through the pocketbooks and charging more for the trash. I don't think that right now is.
We don't charge.
Yeah, so those are the ideas I'm familiar with, but that's obviously, there's a lot more ideas out there. I'm not suggesting we hold everything up for that. I mean, we can always amend it at some point if you're due. So I'm not suggesting we have to come to the streets of policy here to keep this thing moving until we get that perfect. Would it help if I would contact IAC? Sure. And ask the mayors how they do bad recycling, how they can have ways of force or encourage it. And just some ideas that way.
I don't think it hurts to hold it off another month, though, does it?
Well, you can do it for a reason.
This is pretty. Well, okay. But I mean, we don't have to pass it all tonight. We do.
No, there's not. I don't have.
Okay, I will get that information out right away. My question, information, and I'll get it to all the council. They can respond to that. I do get decent ideas from the town. Meanwhile, I would encourage everyone to read through it and have a strike.
Did you send this to us in PDF or not a PDF or a Word document? Because I got a number of places here where I, and maybe we can just talk about it too. It just, I'll just highlight them and then we don't have to debate. I'm just, you'll see where, what I'm, where I'm coming from. You all can think about it. Ninety-three, fourteen, containers, B. I'm not, I'm not sure if we're being clear there. And I understand it, but we say containers to be number thirty gallons, not exceed forty pounds. Then we say the large totes are acceptable. So if or but all trash, I don't know if you're going to pull out the trash out of a large container. Is that what you're saying? Okay, it's not.
It's, it's a lot more timely and that's why it says under the toders, but all bags within must be placed inside trash bags.
Yeah.
If they choose not to have a toter, this is all from the existing ordinance.
Yeah.
That they are allowed to use plastic bags and simply send them out to the curb.
Exactly. And, and.
In other words, thirty years ago, everybody had a trash can with a metal lid. Now most people set out plastic bags.
Right. I understand that. I'm just saying, I think when you say totes are acceptable, instead of saying but, I was saying if, they're only acceptable if all the trash bags are, if they're in trash bags and it's, they're tied or whatever. Under brush, I think it's something that we've been doing right now at discretion. I don't think, Mark made a comment the other week that he's not sure that's, he would want that to stay at discretion. I would agree that either we do or we don't and not leave it at discretion unless there's reasons to do that. And I'm, I'm interested in knowing what they might be and why we wouldn't do that. I think there's some inconsistency between B and C, D, in terms of what we're saying about manageable size and then later on three feet and so forth. And then E, I think I understand what we're saying there, but we're saying that we've got to designate them as yard waste. And I don't know exactly how we designate that. We don't have anything telling us what, how, how to do that. And might be instead of designating, maybe, maybe making it, designating it yard waste by separating it, having it set separate from the trash or something like that. Again, I'm just trying to be clear there. Ninety-three, eighteen, here's where.
I think the next sentence says the bag must be tagged, designated yard waste or leave so as not to be confused with trash.
Yeah.
That's me that in the first sentence.
I know. And I guess I'm saying, how do you designate the bag? I'm saying.
A lot of people, what they do is they use the third bags for the yard waste. Therefore, you can see what trash lookings. They're really pretty easy to tell.
Well, I know they are. I, I just didn't know if you had something minor, if we needed to find a way of designate. Ninety-three, eighteen, here's where I think recycling comes in. I think we ought to not pick up newspaper cardboard since that is a recyclable, but.
Well, you could make it just like the end of ninety-three, fourteen, B, where it says basically, and are encouraged to utilize recycling to meet, you know, for the, for this type of, you know, or something like that. But it's, it's already in there in one spot. Just kind of move it and spread it out. And maybe that's the way you put it in there, Glenn, is you just.
Ninety-three, fourteen, which one?
B, the very, the one you talked about earlier, actually. Even if you look at the very last line on it, where it's talking about the number of bags, it actually says, they're encouraged to utilize recycling to meet this limit. When you just say that, you know, residents are encouraged to recycle rather than throw this material in the trash.
Well, I guess I just would say having that designated out separate didn't seem to make sense.
We can strictly strike it if you want.
Well, I think, I think incorporating my, Jamie's idea of incorporating it there, might, might work very well because we can also talk about other items that could be recycled in addition to that. Yeah, it should be recycled, yeah. And then my other question on, I appreciate the work on the articles not to be collected and, and what we're saying about what's going to happen if people persist in that. My question is, and I don't know, but is the, that cost of that service of $250, is that really high enough to discourage or would? And I don't know, would somebody say, you know, that's not, I got such a big bunch of it here. I just go, let them do it. No, it's cheaper for me to do that than do something else. That's my question. I don't.
It doesn't say that it will be $250. The minimum will be $250. In other words, the way we do it on the grass ordinance with a $200 minimum, that's the minimum. It takes me thirty minutes to mow your grass and the charge is forty-seven, fifty. I mark out forty-seven, fifty and I charge you two hundred. By the same token, if they put out a large amount of trash, for example, we cleaned the yard the other day, it'd be ignored. Their bill was $987.50. So in other words, you sent me out the entire household and thirty squares of used shingles in the front yard, and I sent four guys to spend the entire afternoon. You're going to get a $1,500 penalty. The minimum's going to be $250.
Okay, then maybe, I agree that maybe we ought to then have something to state that it, you know, the amount of charge would be dependent upon the amount of, the amount and the time of required to take care of it.
I think it says, records an official sworn statement showing the cost and expense incurred for the work. So in other words, there is an itemized bill that is prepared. This section is actually copied exactly from the current grass adjunct that was reviewed, put together, I think, by Mr. Gordon.
Alright.
And that's why it's, it's like this, it said the code where we can go ahead and file in the quarter's office and have it placed as a tax assessment.
I saw that $250. I didn't see the minimum because I was thinking the same thing. It needed to be higher.
The other one said two hundred. This one was $250. Very good. Now for clarification, I want to go back to ninety-three, eighteen. You simply want to put all residents, you want a second sentence?
Or something about, you know, this was, or we encourage all residents to recycle this type of material, something like that.
Well, I can refer to say what this, what that material is.
Well, it is. It's ninety-three, eighteen. It's newspaper cardboard.
Well.
Well, newspapers, magazines, cardboard must be.
Well, that, that's right.
And you know if they use up the recycling containers and won't have.
Right. So maybe we just need to state it as.
And you said newspapers cardboard, then you could have them locked and picked up, outs, lessons for recycling.
Well, that's, we can always control it because they could put it inside of bags. You have to hang clip.
If the, the amount of bags that are listed, it encourages you to recycle.
Yes, I gathered the input for the bag limit. That was in discussions with Norma Bainbridge, who's administrative for the solid waste district. There's never been a bag in the city of Greensburg and that's why she strongly encouraged we put one in because that, from what she's ascertained from various meetings with other solid waste ministries across the state, when you put a bag limit in and if you leave those bags, or if you charge them for each additional bag, those people will start to consider recycling because if they know if they got three green totes, they're free, you know. And if they're getting a bill at the end of the month on their water bill, in most places, what they're doing, they're charging a dollar bag. They put ten bags out every week once and they get their water bill, they have a $20 surcharge. For trash, that's when they start to look at the recycling option. The problem is it's a real logistics nightmare for the sanitation department to keep track of every house where you pick up the same bag. Because you more or less have to carry spreadsheets, you have to mark every bag, I'm talking about.
I mean, I guess it's, I don't know, maybe the, the ordinance is there not to penalize an occasional over bag here or there, but you know, maybe more as a constant abuser.
Right. I'll send you a, a statement or send it to you if people look at as far as clarifying that in terms of recycling.
The other things that we, that are in here that we haven't discussed, a couple of the big changes was the addition of a commercial establishment. And our current ordinance says that we won't pick them up, but it doesn't tell you want one in. I looked at several definitions of other cities' ordinances to come up with the commercial establishments. And we probably want to go over that.
It's on the front page.
Front page under ninety-three oh one, the definition of commercial establishments. As far as businesses, the big change you're going to see, and this was what several other communities have, is a mobile home complex with five or more individual homes shall also be considered a commercial establishment.
Do we, do we have places like that now where we are?
Currently, we pick up two and we don't pick up the third. And my understanding, the reason we started picking up two of them was because they called in and complained to the administration and they were directed to start. But I've had several calls from the operator of the one that we don't now, one that no light on at our state. So they have the.
Uncertainty.
They're one, but they can do all. We're not going to do.
Well, I'm asking for your directions. You're the council. Do you want to pick up none of them? They're all on private streets. They're narrow. I don't know if you remember, there was an incident in the one out in Vista Village where they crushed a child here a couple of years ago. Thank God it wasn't a garbage truck. It's a recycling truck. Yeah. It could have been the garbage truck five minutes later. The streets are narrow.
Well, I mean, it's already put in. I think it goes to commercial establishments. And I say we pick up not, we pick up zero.
It's not even current.
Right, this is new.
This would be new. So.
Well, if you're all that language, then I think you go with.
Absolutely. I'm asking for your direction.
Basically, in the past, if a person had wanted me to pay their water bill, they were also trash picking in those type of situations.
The other one we pick up.
But if you look at those, I mean, that's not any different than maybe how you're looking at an apartment complex. Right. So, you know, we don't, we don't do those, right?
No.
So.
But for some reason, at the request of the owner at that time, one of the retired communities, we do go ahead and do pick up house to house in front of each unit.
We can't pick them too. We can't, right?
Okay. You agree?
I agree.
I think, I think we, we are looking at residential service.
We're on any part of the service.
I, I think if we're going to make that change, we should maybe let those places know ahead of time and give them an ample opportunity to find another service rather than just shut it off.
Oh, I agree.
We need to make sure we give them plenty of time to.
It's not like next Thursday, all of a sudden everything stays up.
Right.
There's a long way to go yet.
But we're not to that point. I think we will have plenty of time.
Okay. I will get that started tomorrow with IAC.
So. And the other one that we kind of touched on and didn't get back to is the one as far as the limbs, the trimmings. The reason there's so much variation is we used to put all of that in the garbage truck. That's why everything was small bundles, very small lengths, and it all went in the garbage truck. Now.
We've actually had some.
Very vague Indiana code, we're not supposed to put vegetation in the land. And that's why the solid waste district actually pays someone to process that material for us. It's a lot more work for us because we have to go land out and drag, make a second trip all the way over town with the equipment and manpower.
Now, Mark, we've also ran the situations where people are clearing off of woods and they get called and have the city out there, I'll tell you, saddle brush to grind, it was the whole woods. And I said, no.
Now, that's, that brings another question. And in B, we got, says we'll collect for properties who remove our trimmed grown trees. And, you know, trimming, trimmings, trees, shrubbery and so forth, I think are in storm damage kind of thing. I think that's, that's.
Your service here.
Yeah, that's proper. But I think just like what we say, that if, you know, somebody has a, a commercial vendor comes in and trims your trees or removes a tree, they have to, they should, that should be part of their service. But I think, just like what we say, that if, you know, somebody has a, a commercial vendor comes in and trims your trees, or removes a tree, they have to, they should, that should be part of their service that they care of. I think in the same way, that if, you know, somebody's better to take down a whole tree, you've got lots of wood there, I mean, whether you're gonna cut it up, remove it, do something with it. You better figure out a way to do something with all of it, is the way I would think, I would think it's, if you trim the tree, small things, but if you're doing a, a major renovation.
They should fix the job.
If you're doing a major renovation, you better have.
No, he's talking about the, if Gary Herbert decides to take a tree down in his front yard entirely, which does itself, we shouldn't pick it up.
That's what I'm saying, that city shouldn't be responsible for picking all that whole tree up, but that should be, you either gotta figure it out some way, or you get a, somebody else there to do it, is what I'm thinking.
I think you have in your, the maximum diameter, what, four inches? Four inches wide in thickness, or thickness, uh, that kind of narrows it down to trimming. You know, trees that limbs that fall out, and once the people take and trim themselves short pieces, trim a tree up, that's what we pick up. Not people cut whole trees cut down, which has happened, we went in before, we cut half a dozen trees down in town.
The worst problem is placing them, and it starts here in about. Well, about another month. We have a lot of people that come into Greensburg, they're not local vendors, because we don't have very many people to trim trees locally in Greensburg. And they come in and they'll go to, not saying it happens there specifically, but they'll go to Fairview Station. And they just go door to door, and we'll trim all of those, this tree back, and we'll cut this all back, and take out four foot of canopy. It's not huge, but it's a lot, a lot of brush, and they'll tell the property owner invariably, well, I'll do that for two hundred and fifty dollars. If you're just wanna pile it up to curb, the city'll chip that for you, and then, but if you wanna pay me five hundred, yeah, I'll chip it in the ground at all. Well, every property owner's gonna go, oh, my hell, yeah, two fifty. And we don't have the manpower to drive around town.
Oh, I know that.
To look to see it, and it happens a lot, because I've actually got into my personal vehicle, one drove out, found somebody and talked to him a few minutes, and he goes, have you got something you need trimmed? Well, yeah, I might, tell me about it, he goes, it's about that size, and he actually told me. If you let me put the brush out in the city, I'll do it for two and a half, it's four hundred if I take it. And then I handed my card to the street commissioner, I'd like you not to quote that anymore. And we did agree to take that pile, since you already entered in the problem, but it happens day after day after day in the long.
Well, maybe by, we got it in here pretty clearly that utilizing funds saving or tree services, that's their responsibility. Maybe we just need to ask people.
I mean, I, I feel like people that have dug themselves, we just about have to. You know, you'll find a lot of people, and we get a lot of calls also, older residents, their kids come up on Saturday, bring the chainsaw and do some tree trimming for them, you know. Do I expect the kids to haul it off?
Well, I think, I think we're agreement, that trimming is one thing, removing a whole tree is something else, and there's things you were trying to make, you know, whether it's, uh, whether it's.
It's.
I think it's, it's, there's a big distinction over here.
Depends on what you want to turn it.
Yeah, in other words, for example, I've seen Howard Watson haul two loads of brush off from trimming one tree, and it's all under four inches.
Yeah, but that's, he's, he's a professional, I'd say.
But there's people that do that on their own also, in other words, that tree's twenty-five foot tall, and they only want it fifteen, they go in and cut ten foot off all the way around.
Are you suggesting that we remove that completely, and we only pick up the storm or shrubbery? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not.
I don't, I don't have a strong, you're.
Well, that's the way it was originally intended, they used to only pick it up when there was storm damage. And they put ninety percent of it in the garbage truck, now we can't put it in the garbage truck, so we have a lot more of it to deal with. I don't think you can take that service away from everybody in the city, and you guys now catch one for minutes, I'm out here, residents. I think we're gonna have to. And that's why I have all the question marks after paragraph A, because I'm asking for your input also. You know, I'd like to see maybe where we just done it one weekend, or one week a month, the first weekend of the month, which is a rush. But then the thought is, I might not have enough manpower to get it done every week.
Yeah, I think you set yourself up there.
Yeah, because that would be encouraging, yeah.
Yeah.
We've also had.
I've had people say the same thing, well, just have heavy trash picked up the first week of every month. Oh, my God.
We've had some.
We won't pick it up the next freeze, everybody recoup.
Mark, you know enough manpower to take care of everybody like they like for you to. We have, we got it now to where we just do the grinding on the trash route the day of the trash pickup, we'll do those residences. We, we've had people, the trash picks up on Thursday, they trim the brush on Friday, expect you to come and get it, because I'm thinking we, you know. So we'll review it, everybody review it, we'll add to it next month.
I do have it as a Word document, would everybody like it sent to him as a Word document?
Yes, we can.
Tim, you want one too? Sorry, you're gonna get one. Okay, the other item is the two distinctions on the mechanics position as far as the job description. I think you want to make sure that there's clarification as far as the skills and knowledge section of it, and those have been added accordingly. So what do you ask the most then, just to bless it? That one I would like to have it blessed, yes, unless you've got additional corrections. In other words, the, the majority of it is based on certification and education, and it's all on the top of page two, there's three items. One of them requires the completion of a post-secondary education program, it's a minimum of sixty credits and a semester hours. It says to maintain ASE or equivalent certification, including needed continuing education, and then also five years of full-time work experience in a mechanics position.
The pieces that you had in here in your proposal talked about, um, the periodization of maintenance schedule, which you've got included in that, uh, job description. And I think there's gonna be something, yeah, both of them had something about inventory and, um, but I, I guess you're trying to, uh, do a better job with that inventory with this other person. Not only scheduled maintenance, um, but that was on both of those, right?
Some of it might have been, some of it.
Pre-season preparation of sturridge, that's part of just the same, your ordinary, uh, maintain.
I think the big change is, this one, because of the qualifications and the certification, this one also addresses citywide, fleetwide, whereas this one doesn't, strictly with the street department.
Yeah, we got all city departments, right?
Yeah, so there's been, this one expands out quite a bit more on that regard.
Yeah, I see that, alright.
On the very specific qualifications, correct.
Have we, has the council approved job descriptions on the, in the personnel book before?
Yes.
You, the other one here is original, right?
Correct.
Well, I would move acceptance of the job description for ASE mechanic.
Second.
Is there more discussion, hearing none, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same side.
And I think, Richard, that has to go up then to our Fort Wayne individual. And then he'll, and let that in with all the others. Good, because I misspelled four, I have a throw on the bottom of the second page, before I sent it on.
I figured somebody'll catch that.
I caught that, by the way, as I flipped through it today. One other thing, uh, while we have you here, our gentleman has taken that position, and he's here tonight, this is Mr. Jerry Adams. He charged us morning at seven o'clock, and I had him changing out headlight switches in the garbage truck, no lights at seven oh two this morning. So I was glad to have him.
I take care of all the old business, uh, before we start new business, I would like to ask the council for a change. After the tax abatement, I would like to have Ms. Patty Jackson from Cersei in southeastern Indiana, there's a blank information. She asked me a month ago today about being on the agenda for this month, and I don't know how it was missed, I did my part, but I missed it. If we can put Patty Cersei in under the, uh, payment request. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
You need a motion to change the agenda?
Yes, I think it should.
I'll make the motion, too, if that's good.
I'm sorry.
He read my line.
That's your story.
He said what you were making a motion for, so.
All those in favor say aye, opposed, same side, thank you, council, appreciate it.
Sure.
First up is Hitachi, Powder Metals, Mr. Greg Olmos.
Now, we have an additional handout. Uh, first of all, I'd like to introduce myself and also Todd here, um, my name is Greg Olmos, and I'm the vice president at Hitachi Powder Metals USA. I've been there for twenty-five years now, and I was actually the first engineer hired on to help do the original construction on the building. I'd also like to introduce Todd Churchport, and he is from Begging Tax Management, and we have hired him to help represent our company for the tax abatement procedures and things and so forth. Uh, next, uh, we'd just like to briefly go over this handout, and I'll start off to explain the details about the actual expansion, and Todd will explain a little bit about the tax side of it. Hitachi Powder Metals USA, formerly Century Technologies Incorporated, is proposing to make a substantial investment in this Greensburg location. The project, uh, includes an expansion of approximately one hundred and thirty thousand square feet. To give you kind of an idea, our existing building is around a hundred and seventy thousand square feet, so it almost doubles the size of our manufacturing facility. And that cost is gonna be approximately seven point seven million dollars. In addition, uh, we will purchase personal property investment or equipment at a value of approximately thirty-one million dollars. Now, if you take a look at the second page, it kinda gives you a breakdown of the different pieces of equipment that will be included in that thirty-one million dollar investment. And if you take a look at the second column, the life expectancy, we highlighted that, uh, most of this equipment that we will be purchasing will have a life expectancy of twenty-five years or more. And maybe to expand on that a little bit more, uh, in manufacturing, sometimes you have dedicated lines that are purchased, and they only last the life of a engine model. In the case of Powder Metal, which is a primary process, manufacturing process for our company, um, we can use the same equipment over and over and over, uh, by just changing out the tooling, and using the same equipment, uh, for one model of vehicle or engine component after another. And in fact, uh, a lot of the equipment that we're using today, we actually purchased twenty-five years ago, and what we're still using today, we're manufacturing the, uh, many, uh, products, uh, in industry primarily. And, uh, quite frankly, we expect it to last maybe another twenty-five years. So as long as you maintain the equipment, refurbish it in some cases, uh, because of the cost involved in some of this equipment, it lasts for a very long time. And, uh, we expect the same for this, that we're gonna do as part of this investment. Current employment is of one hundred and, one hundred and forty-seven employees, uh, we expect to hire an additional forty-nine employees, which as a result will provide two point two million dollars of additional payroll, tax payroll, um, bringing the total projected annual payroll to about eight point seven million dollars. Uh, tonight, we're seeking a ten-year tax abatement for both the building expansion and the, uh, personal property investment. Again, uh, the reason why we're asking for the ten-year for both is that the majority of this investment, we expect the life of that equipment to last twenty-five years or more. And a good example of that, of course, is like I explained, a lot of the equipment that we're using now has lasted that long, we're expecting to be using even longer. But then I'm gonna hand it over to you, Todd.
Alright. Um, I think the, the one thing that is important to understand with, with Wayne Indiana's, um, property tax structure is for personal property taxes, and I'm not sure that anybody understands this. Um, but just on a technical issue, for personal property assessment purposes, the, the assets that are placed in service in a business, maintain a residual value of what we refer to as a floor value equal to thirty percent of the cost of the equipment for the duration of its existence. So, uh, a piece of equipment may become fully appreciated or depreciate down to a book value of zero for accounting or for tax, income tax purposes. But for Indiana property tax purposes, the aggregate total assessment of a facility for personal property cannot go below thirty percent of the original cost. So, for as long as, so for example, Greg mentioned the equipment that they purchased twenty or twenty-five years ago, it is still being assessed at thirty percent of its cost. So, um, if you look at the, the third page of the attachment, what we did was we ran some projections just to give you an idea as to what this approximate thirty-one million dollar of equipment investment means in terms of tax revenues, um, assuming a ten-year abate was granted. And you can see the annual incremental revenues as the abatement phases, the assessment phases in over the ten-year period. And then, um, and in total over the ten-year period, even under this abatement period, it's about, um, in aggregate, about an additional one million dollars of personal property taxes will be paid. And over a twenty-year life, you can see the, the last line there, years eleven through twenty, it's gonna be generating, uh, over two hundred thousand dollars a year in personal property taxes. Uh, so in total, over a twenty-year period, uh, we didn't even take this out to twenty-five, just over a twenty-year period with a ten-year tax abatement, you're still looking at nearly three point two million dollars of incremental, uh, property tax revenue as a result of just a personal property investment. So that's part of the, you know, unlike some of the other, um, manufacturers that may have shorter, uh, life equipment, that may only last for ten years, or twelve or fifteen years. We have a different situation here at Hitachi, uh, we think it warrants consideration for the tax on the abate, uh, period. This is a substantial, as Greg mentioned, it is a substantial equipment investment, um, it represents, from a personal property standpoint, about a forty percent increase over their current investment, bringing, bringing the total equipment investment in this facility to about a hundred million dollars. These jobs, uh, that are being created pay well, average, uh, annual salary, we just reached job grade is about forty-five thousand a year. The last bullet point here, I, you can let Greg address more, but, but the one issue is, is that Hitachi is a global company, and they are going to, to look at, uh, you know, they need to consider all aspects where their place investment, so the, the facility here in Greensburg isn't just competing against its competitors, it actually has to compete to a certain. it actually has to compete to a certain degree internally with other Hitachi facilities for the allocation of capital, which is made out of corporate funding. So, you know, corporate accountants and finance people are looking at these types of investments, they will look at property tax loads and that sort of thing, determine the rate of return on investment. You know, there are certainly, most countries and some states, United States, don't have personal property taxes at all, so there are a number of factors that would be taken into consideration. Be happy to answer, and my primary purpose here is to try to answer if there's any questions regarding the technical aspects of the abatement or the personal property taxes as we prepare their, Hitachi's annual property tax returns that have been doing so for a number of years. Pretty familiar with the numbers and that sort of thing.
Maybe I can add one additional comment, the last bullet point. For those of you that aren't definitely with Hitachi Powder Metals USA, they're actually, they have, Hitachi Powder Metals was bought out about three years ago by Hitachi Chemicals. So they're now one hundred percent owned by Hitachi Chemical, which is a very large company, sells over five billion a year, a very large, in fact, the size of Hitachi Powder Metals globally is only eight percent of their entire business. So Hitachi Chemical is, has an agenda to expand aggressively globally. In Japan, of course, everyone knows that the value of the yen has impacted their ability to compete, so they're looking to expand very aggressively globally. As Todd mentioned, it's not a guarantee. So not only will it make this decision tonight, that will impact, let's say, this, this proposal, it also could impact additional opportunities later, which we have a very good opportunity to actually get. So Hitachi Chemical has a lot of different products that they want to move and they want to be able to produce in North America. We want them to produce those in Greensburg. However, it has to be very competitive. And so they're going to not only take a look at how successful we are now to be able to get some volume to make investment as competitive as possible, but also it will impact future opportunities, which we definitely have, when it comes to where they're going to.